August gets out more than I ever. It's never a good sign. All right, it's 9:30, Wednesday morning, the 28th. We'll bring this special session of Somerville County Commissioner's Court to order. Let's break the show. Larry Holsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Krantz are all present. Item number one, discuss take action on additional SRO officers at schools. We have Dwayne Griffin, Allen West, and Wayne Rotan here if we have any discussions or... Wayne, I believe your group voted Monday night, didn't they?
Yes, sir. In this day and time, we feel that it's necessary for us to add two additional resource officers at a... One at the elementary campus, one at the intermediate right now. We have two, y'all pay for one, and we're paying for the other, and we would be willing to pay for the additional two officers.
All right.
And I think I have a good answer, but if you'll add anything. Right now, to provide additional security, we're hiring off-duty officers, and while that's cost beneficial to us, I think it's putting a strain on the resources of our sheriffs department, and so we are willing to pick up the cost of those additional officers.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. Do we have any questions or discussion for Wayne? August Sheriff's Department, either one?
Sheriff's Department on what is the outlook on being able to do this in a timely manner, and when would you want this implemented, hiring these new people?
As soon as possible that we can get the names of the word out, try to get some people qualified to get in these spots. It's still a two- to three-month process by the time they get their brand added to the PTO program and be ready, so...
So as soon as we give the green light, y'all can move forward.
If we have to hire someone that's totally green, that is not PCO certified, we could be looking at four or five months before we get someone in the school to get them PCO certified, get them FTO trained on our streets before we put them into the school. So, I mean, it just depends on who comes in and applies to the position.
Then that poses a different question, Mr. Rotan, and in that potential implementation period, from the time somebody is hired, if he didn't get a fully qualified person until the time they completed their qualifications, would we need to continue to augment that staffing with part-time positions?
Sir, I think we are prepared. If the timeframe does not allow for the first day of school, I think we are definitely prepared to keep hiring off-duty officers if that's what you're asking.
Yep.
Just the presence over there is huge, I think, and we appreciate the officers that are putting in the extra hours, that have been willing to come over there and work and provide safety and security for our kids.
Good. Hopefully, we can find qualified people right off the bat.
We just want to make sure that we pick the right people for that position. We don't want to rush in and...
That's all.
Do I have a motion?
Like a motion that we approve the additional SRO officers at the school.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussions?
Wait a minute.
What about the vehicles?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. My understanding, this was more or less going to be next year's budget. I know, I know it's needed. I'm all for that. But what are we going to do? Like you just said, vehicles and payroll.
We have some extra equipment as far as like weapons. Have some in our armory that we can issue for the new officers. We'll have to purchase some belts and other various things, but the biggest item is going to be the cars. We will need to have their vehicles, and that'll be up to the Commissioner's Court to decide. If they're going to start August 1st, we need to order the vehicles today because it takes three or four months. They're not just sitting on a shelf. They have to be built for our specific needs.
And I'll take blame for this. I wasn't prepared to discuss the vehicles today, and that's my fault, Wayne, because I moved forward to SRO officers. And I didn't think about the timeframe to order them. I was thinking about by the time you got them hired, that gave us, you know, a month, six weeks, two months to look at this, figure out what we're going to do. Then if it's three months, we had time to figure out what we were going to do. I'll take full blame for that. We can discuss that again on April the 9th if you want. We'll discuss the vehicles that commissioners want to discuss, how they want to do it. We'll put it on the agenda on the 9th. All right, I have a motion by John, and a second by Larry to move forward to the SRO officers. Do we have any further discussion or questions or comments? All in favor, say motion. That's five for, zero against. Item number two, discuss take action on new fees for brush and wood at transfer station. Correct me if I'm wrong, what I have from Mike Dunlap and Frontier, it's $10 minimum up to 650 pounds, prorated $30 a ton over 650 pounds for Somerville County residents. Out-of-county rates would be a $20 minimum up to 800 pounds, prorated $50 per ton over 800 pounds. As everyone knows, or hopefully they know, the reason that we're doing this, looking for this, is to offset the cost of the tug grinder and employees and equipment it takes to run the tug grinder.
I think it's just a service that we can't keep providing.
Right. For free.
For free. We are going to provide it.
Right.
Is that one of our employees that does that?
Yes.
Who is that?
It's whoever.
It changes. They run it.
Because that's a workers' comp issue.
And that has changed the last two weeks. That has changed drastically.
We used to have a dedicated employee in that, in a separate department. That's what's his job.
The way I look at this is it's same as trash. You have to pay somebody to dispose of your trash, and that's what this is for us on this. We've done it for around, I think, 20 years for nothing. If it was a service we was providing for nothing. So it's time for somebody to pay.
So does Brady need to get with you and let you know the people that are operating it from time to time?
Well...
Because we're trying to take that down like one day a week.
And I may have just missed the ball on that one, but we do need to make sure that we're paying workers' comp on an employee. I don't really need to know which one.
No, they're a full-time employee. It's same as any...
It's based on their income. I mean, it's based on their salary, what we pay for workers' comp for somebody, and the person that operates that tug grinder is, we pay way more workers' comp on that employee than just a regular...
We need to know that because we may have...
...average employee. So I just, you know, I could just sell it.
So that's why we had to hire a lot of person down there doing it.
Is that based on the fact that it's...
Well, that might have been the reason. Why were you...
Kendrick Brown.
...the one time. He was part-time.
Yeah. So we'll get Brady to tell you what his plans are going forward. We know he's going to be running.
That'd be great.
As we move forward, because they've had quite a few changes the last couple of weeks. Well, do we have a motion to move forward to the new rates for brush and wood?
I think we need to identify the Somerville County resident thing, because you've got some Somerville County residents that's in the business of cleaning lots and hauling off brush and stuff, and I don't know that this statement really identifies it good.
Well, let me... Kenneth, I understand.
So we don't have a motion yet, but we want to discuss it?
No, we don't have a motion yet.
You want to go ahead and discuss it?
Yes.
Well, can I answer his question first?
You bet.
I agree with you. If they're in business, they're getting paid to haul it off, but if they haul, it's per load. It's how much... They're going to get charged more if they haul more up there.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, to me, that would...
What do you want, like a commercial rate, separate from Somerville County rates?
I think when we're identifying to, it needs to be... And the $10 minimum on some buddy that just picked up a few things in their yard where they trim bushes or something, goes up there, it's a little steep, I think, but that's depending on what the court decides.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong here, if I'm way off on my numbers. Last year, we invested, what, $70,000 to $80,000? I took all the insurances out of it. I deducted that back out of it.
I'd have to go back and look, Judge, I'm sorry. I didn't bring my financials with me.
And I don't want us to... That's pretty close, because the budget for that was like over $100 and something thousand for the landfill.
For everything.
And we deducted the insurances and the scales, and we took the manpower and the upkeep. It's between $70,000 and $80,000, I believe. If I'm misjudged, then... So that's what we're trying to offset.
Absolutely. The biggest one, obviously, for that is the repairs and maintenance to the equipment and also the fuel expense.
Right. That's what, $1,500 bucks a month every time they fire it up?
Those are the two big line items that hit over a regular basis.
And we can't get rid of the waste.
Right. The most... Well, I guess it'd be the general consensus of the court then, if I have a motion for the $10 minimum, we'll move forward. If I don't, we'll back up and we'll...
Well, I like the motion.
All right. I have a motion by Larry to accept it as written, right? Somerville County residents, $10 minimum up to 650 pounds, $30 a ton over 650 pounds. County rates, out-of-county rates, $20 minimum up to 800 pounds, prorated $50 a ton over 800 pounds. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion or issues?
Okay. Commercial rates. We have out-of-county commercial rates, we have in-county commercial rates, right or wrong?
See, that's where I'm confused. I don't see anything on here about commercial rates. So show me, where do we see commercial rates at?
We don't have it.
Okay. Right.
So my point being is that we have Somerville County residents...
Yep.
...that are in business to haul stuff out to our landfill that are receiving compensation for removing it from one location, taking it to our landfill, and we're grinding it up free, and that's a commercial endeavor. All right? And they're county residents. I think that if they're commercial, even if they clean up houses, new bills on houses, that's commercial. They're getting paid to do that. Then we should have a commercial rate, and it's, in my opinion, it should be the same as the out-of-county rates. Commercial rate equates to commercial rates, and because I project that we're going to see a challenge from additional acreage being cleared in the future. They can't burn it in the city limits, so they're going to have to find a locale to take it to. And if we're in the, we're still in the tug grinding business, then we ought to have a little higher rate because they're getting compensated for it.
What do you suggest on that?
I think that the commercial rates, if you're in business, whether you're a county resident or not, then you ought to pay the out-of-county rates. That's where I think commercial rates ought to fit. It'll be $20 minimum.
Well, the way Mike and Frontier came up with this pricing structure was they took the amount that we ran, commercial and just your individual, and put the calculator to it, and this is, you know, what he came up to cover the entire cost. When tractor supply went in, they cleaned the lot, we did over 300,000 tons. On average month, we do about 152 to 156 tons, 1,000 tons. And that's what he structured. He didn't really strip out commercial versus, you know, your residential, or however you want to call it. He just took it as a whole to come up with these numbers.
I have no problem changing that motion.
What you call that motion?
If you come up with a price. I thought maybe if you haul more up there, you're going to pay more.
That's right. Prorated per ton. If you take a commercial...
Well, you're paying more than a white truck with a trailer. But it doesn't matter to me.
Who determines if they're commercial?
That was a question. What is that determination?
Well, it's obvious. You can tell, but...
Most of the times, it would be obvious, but...
But to me, if you pay more, you're going to pay... I mean, if you haul more up there, you're going to pay.
Right.
I like the idea, keeping it simple. Like you said, if they're commercial, they just go to the out-of-county column, and then it makes it A or B, you know, instead of trying to come up with...
Well, if they're out-of-county, it doesn't matter whether they're commercial or not, too?
That's what I'm hearing.
So what you're talking about is leave Somerville County residents alone, and out-of-county rates and commercial rates would be this amount?
To me, I don't care about taking out-of-county.
I think a lot of them probably go away when they start paying. Because they've only been coming here now because it's free.
Sure.
And we're going to have to pay for gas, then.
Right. And we kept it underneath the Alvarado, so if they want to pay a little bit more, take it Alvarado.
Marineberry does have a brush on the disposal place, but they don't take lumber or anything else. It's clean.
All right.
It's clean when they're...
Take nails and...
Anything else mixed in with it.
It's not worth any race. What is it worth, though? Five dollars is not worth it.
Well, let's see what we want to do here. I've got a motion and a second on the rates as stated. Do we want to withdraw that motion and change the rates, or do we want to move forward and take a vote on what's laying in front of us?
Well, to me, we can tweak this anytime before we get the signs made. Take one? We can move? We can change the wording up.
Oh, as far as Somerville County residents, and then put on the sign out-of-county residents and commercial?
Not if you vote on it, you can't. I mean, if you're voting on it, then whatever you vote on has to be what you're approving, unless you have the stipulation and the vote that you can change it, but...
Right. We can recommend and vote. My motion that we can change.
When's our next? April 9th?
April 9th.
I'll tell you, my suggestion is, I'd like to talk to this guy one-on-one, and...
Are you talking about Mike Dunlap and Frontier?
Yeah. Talk to Dunlap and explore the...
You could table it for right now, call him, see if he can come in.
I'll talk to him this morning.
You want me to...
We've had, we've been working on this a while.
Then go ahead and vote on it, because I don't think it's clear, and I think if we're going to try to sidestep what we're voting on today, I think we ought to vote on what we're going to put on.
Let's clarify that. We are not trying to sidestep what we're voting on here today. Let's clarify that. We are not trying to sidestep.
Okay.
Okay? So listen. Yeah. So Larry, would you like to withdraw your motion? Would you like to go ahead and vote on the motion and the second that stands?
I just seen the majority of the court, or the total of court, be agreeable on this, so I guess I'll withdraw it if we move forward.
Larry has withdrawn his motion. I will withdraw my second. We'll take no action on this as of today?
I would like to re-list it on April the 9th to clarify wording, so that on April the 9th, we can vote on it and be done with it.
There you go. So we will take no action on item number two, and we will put it on April 9th's agenda. All right. Item number three, discuss take action on improvements to the IT at the Expo Center, and we've got a proposal here somewhere. All right. I don't know if Frank or Brian or who else is going to discuss this.
Well, I mean, y'all, it doesn't matter. I know that, you know, I can report that the judge and I met with Eddie to kind of talk about this in a two-step phase as to what the project was, from what we understood was a real pressing need, which was that the IT, the Wi-Fi aspect of it was less than optimal. And he kind of broke down for us what was necessary for the, you know, to get the IT up and running so that everybody has the ability to log in, and it's strong enough for taping and, I guess, what's the word, streaming the video to around the country for those people that want to do it, if that's what they're wanting to do. And then the bottom half was kind of, you know, almost like a, I mean, there were some of this was for like, for some advertising opportunities, some pretty high-dollar camera structures that really didn't really, I mean, it doesn't do anything for the operational side of the Expo. So I wanted to kind of, maybe let's budget, put that into the budget in the coming year if that's the direction, I mean, like the two TVs at $1,700 a pop, we really don't need those immediately. They're not a pressing need. That's something we can put into 570 through our discussions of the budget. The, you know, the pretty high dollar, the $1,900 pan tilt zoom camera, along with the $800 joystick, was something that, again, is not dealing with the Wi-Fi aspect, which is what we understood was the real need right now. So with backing out that, I mean, we can, we can get what Eddie recommends to get the Wi-Fi set up so that everybody that's there, vendors, contractors who are wanting to stream, that's going to be about 15 grand to get all of that in there and set up.
Did you leave the four cameras in? They're just standard cameras on that amount?
No, sir, I didn't. That was the next step.
Okay, sorry.
If you wanted to do security cameras, then there's the four cameras down there, just the regular cameras at $610 a pop on those. But the 15,000, 161 addresses per Eddie, everything to have a very strong and robust Wi-Fi signal throughout the entire complex.
The top three items?
Yes, sir. The first one, which is the five of the switches, the Cisco switches, then we have one of the Cisco router, and then the 14 access points, which will be all, the dual-band access points, which will be all around the facility, all around the campus, which will allow people to log in and everything. So when we have a bunch of vendors there, and they're all there with their credit card machines, wanting to get Wi-Fi access, they'll have plenty of access for that. If a contractor is there wanting to livestream video, he'll have enough backbone there to do that. Nobody will be getting kicked off, that kind of stuff.
And I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I told Frank that if the court was agreeable and you were agreeable on the cameras themselves, you know, we could take it out of that security line item, just that only, that 2480, if we leave that 799 off, and then the rest of them, the rest of the devices, I'm not sure where the money had been discussed to come from.
Right. I mean, if we're talking about the, you know, I think these other things, which really are not a security, I agree with you on the cameras.
Right. Especially what he's been through the last several weeks.
Absolutely. And these are motion-activated cameras, so they're not going to kick on unless there's motion. Then it'll start taking pictures of them and stuff like that. So, you know, it's really kind of, you know, they work independently.
And we don't waste the storage that it takes to store the video unless there's actual need it.
Absolutely. And so, you know, but the rest of these items, if we want to go with a real high digital pan tilt zoom cameras and joysticks and display boards and all that kind of stuff, I think that should probably be something through the budget process that we talk about and put them in the 570 and get the, get those amounts set aside for those things.
And where the 15,000 will come from?
15,000 will have to do some creative work, but I think I can dig some of that up. I feel confident. I feel a whole lot more confident on 15 than I did on 30. But, you know, getting everything up, but, you know, I think I can dig up to 15.
What was the total number again? 15?
15, 161, 25.
What are you getting 30 at? I don't...
I'm sorry, 23, 124.
$7,000 less than 30.
Yeah, the 7,000 was for all the other, and of course, we can do the $609 cameras, the four that he has packed in there for the security purposes. We can take that out of the courthouse security. Yeah.
All the cameras are security cameras. The high-dollar camera is the one, sole one in the main arena, which is, because the main arena is so big, it's obviously got to get different type of cameras. The joystick is to actually run the camera where you can zoom in, zoom out. They're all security cameras.
Right. But the one in the arena is going to take somebody to man it to have it be a security camera. That's the whole purpose of the joystick, so...
The joystick is to move it for events.
Right.
Yeah. It doesn't take somebody to man it. You would go back and, you would set it in a stand position for night. If I wanted to use it during an event, then I operate, then it needs, you know, you need to operate it, but it's there for a security camera.
Is this because we've had some break-ins?
We've had four in a, under a three-month period. And we just put in 120 worth of PA.
So with the four security cameras, around about 17,5?
15.
Yes, sir. And the 24, 38, 80, we've got that accounted for, but the other 15,000 that we don't have accounted for just yet, unless I'm misspeaking.
17, 6.
I didn't turn my phone down, did I? It got busted.
Hello?
Fine myself, right?
The idea with the security part of it was obviously the cameras. And like Brian said, there is two different parts of it. Eddie thought if we're going to do it, let's do it all at once, and we'll save some work. Just do it, and you can do it all at the same time. The additional, the TV screens are, if I'm going to have a camera in the main arena, I can broadcast on those displays, and if I'm going to broadcast, I can probably recoup some of my money on buying those cameras. That's what the additional means were. So that if I've got an eroping event, the camera's going to be in a different angle. If I got a barrel, it's going to be in a different angle. At night, it'll go back to a static position to cover obscurity in the arena.
So the one out in the arena is more than just security. It'll be to broadcast to the TVs that you have?
Absolutely. Yes. That's why it requires something to operate the camera, the joystick part of it.
Right.
Yeah. If I could play that, I could probably recoup some of my money. Advertising.
Well, Alder, with the displays and the PTO or the camera to get to the displays, you still recommend that we look at it when we do the budget?
Just with the amount, the sheer money that we've gone through this year, we're just...
I totally understand.
I mean, unless you want to take the display board from the front of the antenna.
It's too little. Lord, no, it's too little. Yeah. Thank you, Brian.
I couldn't resist.
Thank you.
I couldn't resist.
Yeah. Well, gentlemen, what are you going to do? What's your decisions?
Well, Alder's got a point, because...
Yes, he does.
...on down the, one of these line items we made by a sign, it's going to be about that much more, too.
I think we need to go ahead with this portion because of the business side of it.
The Wi-Fi end of it, and then the four security cameras?
If you're breaking those out, if, what Kenneth's talking about, is how much?
The Wi-Fi will be 15, 161, and then the cameras will be 24, 39, for a grand total of 15, 6.
17.
I'm going to choose 17, 6. I didn't carry my one, sorry. I'm a two.
And I'm not trying to put you on... And I'm going to try and put you on the spot here. Do we know where you're planning on looking at fifteen-one? Is it going to try to come out of Frank's budget, many different items? Or is it going to come from contingency somewhere?
No, I pretty much, I pretty much drained Frank in, in his line. We'll have to be moving it from the general fund over. I've got a little bit of, of money left over in right now, or not left over, but just unclaimed in the, the annex courthouse capital improvements line. Then I can maybe tap into that.
So we wanted to add the second part back into a future budget.
Put it into our budget discussions for fiscal nineteen.
So we got seventeen-six out of the twenty-three. So we're three, six thousand, six thousand.
Right, and with, and with this technology, you know, we'll either get for the same price better technology in five months or we'll get the same technology for cheaper. I mean, it's, that's the key with technology. It's either going to improve and, you know, what we go for is now a better thing or we stick with this and it just dropped in price by thirty percent.
That leaves me with most security cameras in the arena.
Right, but it's at every entrance and any parking lots. And the concourses and, I mean, you've got four cameras.
Yeah, but at least we have no security cameras in the arena, which there's multiple access. Two of the break-ins came from the main arena. That's all they impacted.
Yo, guys, what do you think?
Well, he's making a point.
Help me one more time here, Brian, I apologize. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we set aside to help subsidize the expo.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty well or will be exhausted.
Yes, sir, we're going to, we just have. We're going to need that for continued operations, yes, sir.
So we're getting to a point that we're going to bug me on what we even allotted for last year in our budget?
Right, we drained the reserve account. I think the reserve was about nine thousand left in it for the expo.
So when we get the lights and the sound?
Correct. So we, we spent all of that buildup over the last couple of years. So, just checking her number there, I remember it probably about nine, nine and change. Ninety-six eighty-two in the February is what's left in their reserve fund after we paid off all the, the lighting and the sound system there.
Well, what if we go with this and wait on the sign?
Certainly.
If we can get all the cameras, we can wait on the displays. I'm fine, totally fine with that, absolutely.
You're, you're talking roadside, right?
Yeah.
He's talking the TV screen.
Oh, I'm talking the displays inside.
I could tell y'all were.
The marquee out of the road.
Marquee. It's on the line, it's on.
Which is a whole other big discussion.
Yeah.
And I think I hear probably what's getting ready to come. If you were to find the fifteen thousand, you have the nine thousand left over we set aside for the expo, then they can probably go ahead and get their full twenty-three thousand. That's where I think we're headed.
I was using that nine in my fifteen.
In your fifteen, okay, cool.
Where I was going to go with fifteen.
So we're right back to the six.
Yeah.
And I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
No, I knew we had the nine in the reserve.
Right.
You know, so.
Well, you, you're kind of convincing me that the security is more important than a sign out on the highway. Question?
Yes, sir.
Security camera for the main arena?
Mm-hmm.
Not the joystick and all that, just a security camera. Fixed position, static position camera.
Right.
How much are they?
Six hundred bucks.
Six hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents each.
And if we're worried about the sound system, I guess we could position one where that would be. Because I mean, everything else in the arena is pretty much.
The reach on, on the four cameras that we added is not the reach in the main arena because the main arena is three hundred and fifty feet. So the idea was to, to save money was put one in the main arena that would be strong enough and clear enough to pick something up on the other end of the arena. And then obviously the bird's eye view.
Well, then, if you're, if you're zooming in basically from one end of the arena to the other, then if, if the, then you could put a fixed position camera closer to the area you're wanting to monitor.
Right, but I would have to add multiple because there's so many access points in. One camera wouldn't do it if we went down to the lower price camera.
But isn't one of the cameras in the concourse? Are all four of these cameras on exterior or are they?
They're all interior.
All interior?
Yes.
So the sound system was in the arena, really the sound system is your biggest threat there, isn't it? As far as loss?
Well, it just depends how you look at it. I mean, I certainly don't want anybody joining on my tractors and running into things. And one of the break-ins, they got on a tractor. And I mean, it depends how you slice it.
You're saying you could get some advertising if you had a camera in there? What, how, how's that work?
Well, the point was if I'm going to, I'm going to try and recoup some of my money. That was the idea.
Well, how, how you going to do that?
Sell advertising on those displays.
You think you could do that?
I think I got a good shot at it, yeah.
That'd be better than a roadside.
What's thoughts, gentlemen?
You, you, you got my thought.
This end's been awful quiet.
The security camera for the, the main arena. What, what does that add to this fifteen thousand?
That's the nineteen hundred dollar one, I think.
Right, eighteen ninety-nine.
Eighteen ninety-nine is the camera. And I don't know if you can have that without the joystick, which is another eight hundred bucks.
So you don't bet twenty-five hundred dollars?
John, I heard you said twenty-three.
How you doing this morning, Andy?
Good, Jeff, how are you?
Well, if we don't have enough money, we don't have enough money. We have enough money to cover the seventeen-six, which does not include the camera in the main arena, correct?
That's correct.
If you, if, if it's for security and you don't have every door secure, it doesn't matter. You're throwing away your seventeen hundred dollars, seventeen thousand dollars. If you don't have every door secure.
Well, seven, you know, part of the seventeen thousand dollars is Wi-Fi. I mean, it's, it's.
There's other things.
It's a customer accommodation type thing.
I understand, but we're talking about a secu, we're talking about security cameras of it.
Right, your only investment in security cameras at this point is twenty-four hundred bucks.
Twenty-four, thirty-nine.
And, you know, it's, the other, the other fifteen thousand is for basically customer accommodation. It's one of the customer complaints that Frank has been receiving.
But to get back to my point, there's no reason to buy any cameras if you're going to have every door secure.
Right, and I, and, and my retort to that is the cameras are an optional thing.
Okay.
You know, if we're going to do the Wi-Fi, to handle the customer thing, yes. Now, if we're going to talk about security, then yes, I agree with you. You, you need to, you know, if, if we need to buy more fixed point cameras to cover every, you know, and, and maybe there's a better, better price on cameras. I mean, you know, maybe we can go with a, a, a lower, you know, if we're going to do every single entry point, then maybe we don't need as big a camera as these. I mean, you know, there's so many different things we can look at.
Well, the seventeen hundred dollars compared to six fifty is nothing as far as getting a camera that's got the wide view and could cover the whole arena. Four and a half, you know, yes, it's still extra money, but you'd have to, you could buy three of the smaller cameras and you go eat up that seventeen hundred dollars.
Granted, but the question becomes on that main arena camera is at night, when it's unmanned, will it literally zoom in to the person taking it? If it automatically does that, then why do we need the joystick anyway? Why can't we just say follow everything? You know, I, I don't, I think you'll get a nice bird's eye view of somebody taking our stuff and he's going to look about this big, leaving the place and.
Well, that's a question to ask the supplier.
Granted, you know, I think with somebody running the joystick, yeah, I bet you they could zoom in on it, but we're talking about at two in the morning.
Well, ain't nobody going to be there to zoom in on it.
And, and yeah, I think it'll kick on if it notices movement, but I don't know if it's going to zoom in on somebody and follow them and.
Question needed to be asked.
Right.
I don't think that was the intent. Do you, Frank?
Actually, the way I understood, the way I understood it, it will pick up movement and move in on it, yes. You can actually operate it off of your phone as well. You can set it up so if it does pick up motion, it'll let you know. So it'll go to somebody's phone and an alarm will go off. Mary actually has a camera in her restaurant that has an alarm and it goes to Gavin's phone. And on numerous occasions, it's picked up movement. And we got some shots of people's legs, but he can operate the camera from his phone. So the joystick's not necessary. And, and, I mean, Brian had a good point. You can buy, or Kenneth had a good point. You can buy numerous cameras to cover every one, but you're probably back up to that figure, so.
I think the focal point ought to be get the Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi fixed right now.
Yeah, and I want to make sure it's, it's also pointed out, the Wi-Fi is not just customer based. The Wi-Fi also is part of our, the way we operate.
Sure.
Our phones, how that works, so they were installed.
Yeah, that, that's your customer, those two.
Yes, I mean, there's a lot, it's, it's probably more than fifty percent of the Wi-Fi. It's just our daily operation.
I think that ought to be the focal point right now. The budget, twenty nineteen budget should address security cameras and all this other stuff. Let's focus on getting the infrastructure correct, corrected to support the Wi-Fi and phones and things of that nature. You agree, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what price are we talking about there?
Fifteen thousand one sixty-one.
Fifteen, one sixty-one and twenty-five cents.
I'm at the motion that we approve the fifteen thousand one sixty-one and twenty-five cents for improvements to the base infrastructure at the expo.
Wi-Fi backbone.
Yep.
I have a motion by John, second, I have a second by Kenneth. Mr. Alder, one more time. You feel good about the nine thousand dollars reserve that's left there? The six thousand, you feel comfortable what you're going to be doing to make this happen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a motion by John, second by Kenneth. Do we have any further discussion? Complaints, issues, all in favor? Five, four, zero against. Item number four, discuss take action appraisal of properly located three oh one Bo Gibbs. I think most of us know that that's where Hill College Beauty College used to be and that's where we have MHMR House at this time, which if y'all decide to move forward with this, I'll discuss moving, what they're going to go, where they're going to go. I talked with Everett appraisal, which we've used in the past. My fee for the appraisal for three oh one Bo Gibbs will not exceed fifteen hundred dollars. My estimated completion at the time within a thirty day period timeframe of the effective date of the letter signed and returned to me, which is Kyle Everett. Y'all decide you want to move forward with that.
Is that only the building and parking lots or does that come all the way out to Bo Gibbs?
That comes all the way out to Bo Gibbs. That's the entire piece of property. The cul-de-sac, you know, fifty percent of the cul-de-sac and then the parking lot in the back, which I'm not sure of that boundary if that's all in one property. But yes, it's the entire piece of property on, what is that, Commerce and Bo Gibbs? Whatever that cul-de-sac is. That's not Commerce.
Commerce wouldn't, yeah, wraps around behind.
There's a progress and there's.
There, there's quite a bit of, well, I don't have any problem with, I would say there's enough room in front of that between the building and Bo Gibbs for us to do something else with.
I think. Building on the building or have some other building.
We certainly can have it replatted.
Instead of having it included in that appraisal, it might, it might sell better with that accent, I mean, that frontage, but.
Right, the way the survey, the current survey is and the way it's on the CAD records is it's entire one lot, all the way out to Bo Gibbs.
The, the appraisal will give us a, a cost per square foot that he's attributing to the land.
Right.
So it'll be real easy for us to.
Yeah, he's going to charge fifteen hundred dollars for the appraisers.
Land.
Part over to him.
Yeah, so we can, we can then make an adjustment to just carve out the building.
If we decide to survey it, break out the front half, we'll go from there. Because there is about an acre or one point two, something like that up front. All right, I have a motion by Larry to proceed with the appraisal.
Second.
I have a second by either one, Kenneth? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, five, four, zero against. Item number five, discuss take action on change order from Glen Rose Carpet and Tile. I don't know if anyone's noticed, he has cleaned the backside and the side where Andy and them park, Andy and Suzie park. The change order is for two thousand dollars. If y'all decide to do it, that would include the, all the sidewalks around the building, the two, what do you ever want to call those planters out front? And then when he seals the building, he would seal the sidewalks also. He said two thousand dollar price, you know, why he's here with his equipment doing it. If y'all would like to look at this, there's the additional.
I think if he cleans up real good after he's through, will be good enough.
So I think Larry would rather not do the two thousand for sidewalks? Is that correct?
Right.
Any other input?
I don't have any.
So we won't take any action on that, not move forward with sidewalks? Is that what I'm hearing? I agree with that. All right. Item number six, another good one. Discuss take action on bids received for expo side marquee. Ching, ching, ching. Always.
Well, what I was hearing before, we need to put that out until next budget.
How, what kind of money would, uh?
So we're going, we're going to use money out of the hot tax, but do we have eighty-seven thousand dollars to use out of the hot tax?
No, sir, not at this point. I mean, we'll have to do some cooperative work here on that. I mean, we can use the hot tax for a portion of it. But, you know, the balance at the end of February is eighty-six thousand. We did pay Fossil Rim and we've already committed to Fossil Rim to partner with them for the Mayfest event that they're going to be doing up in Fort Worth in May. So, you know, I don't have a, a number on that, but I would assume it's probably going to be pretty similar to what we just did with, with Spartan down in Houston. So, you know, all that's to say is that we won't have the full amount for the sign. We'd have to come up with a, some more creative financing.
How much we generating per year from hot tax?
Thirty-five thousand.
So if we hold off a year, would, I, I'm of the opinion that we should. I don't know that the price will escalate going forward, but I think we ought to have the money in the hot tax line to pay for this sign.
Okay.
My opinion.
Well, that, that was what, that was the intent on using that money for a job. But if it's not in there, we can't.
But we have to use portions of it for other types of advertisements and things of that nature. I'm saying we can accumulate over time, correct?
Correct.
Until we get enough to pay for this sign. Until we get enough to pay for the sign.
Because that's one of the permitted uses of the hot tax is signs that direct tourists to tourist attractions and tourist venues. And obviously, that would be, the expo would definitely fit that. And on promis nights, the marquee can say Texas Amphitheater here, you know, we can do all kinds of things there.
All in same agreement?
Yeah.
Look at the budget, see the money, the hot tax?
Yeah.
All right.
No action.
So there'll be no action taken on number six either today? Number seven, discuss take action on donation from Vernon Auto Group?
Well, I'd love to say this would take care of your shortage of the sign, but in accordance with state statutes, the commissioners' court has got to approve and accept all donations. We've received a unrestricted donation from Vernon Auto Group to Cernville County in the amount of a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to accept this donation?
So moved.
I have a motion by John, second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Brian?
I'll just tell you, I know that, I don't know if you know where this came from, but we had a county resident who purchased a vehicle. And when you purchase a vehicle, you now have the option to tell the dealer where to pay your registration fees, what county. And he specifically told them to do that through Cernville County, and the auto group did not, and that resident was very upset. And, you know, the auto group wanting to make their customer happy called Darlene and asked how much money the county was out. And, you know, the customer was actually asking the auto dealer to undo the registration and re-register it, which would have been just horrible. So the auto group just decided to make a donation for the missed amount of tax that we would have received.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Five, four, zero against. Item number eight, discuss take action on walk-in cooler for committee on aging. I believe Pam may have come over and met with you last week, or David or somebody did.
We kept getting crossways on when she was available and I was available. We did receive five different bids. And four of the bids that we take under consideration, thankfully enough, all dealt with the same piece of equipment. I was glad to see that, so we were able to actually look at apples to apples and because they were all specking the same model number of equipment. And looking at that, the one that stood out to us was Alderfirst out of Stephenville. They had the best price on the equipment for five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. They also had an upgrade, if we so chose, to double it from a one horsepower to a two horsepower condenser and changing it from a eighty-six hundred BTU to a nine thousand BTU. And that would be a grand total of seventy-four ninety-one. Even with the upgrade, they were still cheaper than everybody else. So I had never heard of this company, and so had Leslie contact him for a list of references. We contacted three of the references, and all three were very complimentary of this company. One of the references being Glen Rose Hospital. And the other two was a housing authority out of Dublin and a camp out of Eastland. So they both...
Is that the one that was created from some guys that used to work for Ingram?
I do not know.
I heard somebody in Stephenville that worked for Ingram several years opened their own business. I didn't know whether that was him or not.
I have no idea, sir. I don't know.
Did David come see you?
Yes, sir, he did, and the proposal he was talking about, he had said, you know, that he was specking out really, really good equipment. And so that's why I dug into it, and sure enough, it's the same equipment. The one that he was talking about, his price was...
I think about six, seven hundred dollars more.
Yes, sir. His combined price was ninety-four fifty-nine. And for the same equipment, for the same equipment, I get it from Alderfirst for fifty-nine sixty-four.
Or the upgrade for seventy-four ninety-one, which is still two thousand.
Yeah, the upgrade.
Even with the upgrade going with the larger piece of equipment, was still cheaper, so...
So your recommendation was what?
Well, you know, my recommendation would be to go, if we were looking at existing equipment, I would go with the lower cost, the five thousand dollar piece of equipment. Now, if you're wanting to do the upgrade because it's a...
Why do you need the upgrade?
You know, just because it's a, you know, it's a beefier system. It's just running with the handles that...
It gets a collar and run, use more electricity.
If they're in and out of it, it would recover quicker. You know, if they got the door standing open for thirty minutes, it would recover quicker and it'd use...
So it'd use less electricity.
Run more efficient. It'd run more efficient.
It depends if you want a salesperson in here or not. You know, my recommendation, obviously, is let's spend the least amount of money for the job, to get the job done. And that would be the Alderfirst bid at five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I have a motion by Larry to accept Alderfirst's bid for five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for the cooler at committee on aging. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in... Five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars even. Do, any more discussion? All in favor, said motion. Five, four, zero against. All right, discuss take action on declaring weapon surplus for trade-in, buyback for sheriff's department?
Yes, sir, these are for, and Dwayne can help us here, these are for eight used EOTech five twelve sites. We have, these are no longer needed. They're buying some replacement or new sites, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we've already taken possession of them.
Correct, they've already taken possession, so now we have a bid for trading these in. GT distributors has given us and offered us a seventy-five dollar per unit price for these eight for a grand total of six hundred dollars. So, you know, so we'll need to have the court declare these items surplus and authorize them to be traded in for the seventy-five dollar price.
Any questions for Dwayne or Alan or Brian? Do I have a motion to declare the weapon surplus?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. Five, four, zero against.
Do we need to do something now on the trade-in thing, or is that, you wanna take care of that?
No, sir, we'll need to also take a motion to trade them in and accept the six hundred dollar price.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the six hundred dollar price for a trade-in, buyback?
Yes.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Item number ten, approved budget transfers. There are none. Item number eleven, approved county bills.
I put a four-page report on your desk. Grand total of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six twenty-nine forty-eight. Obviously, a large portion of this is as a retirement payment. We normally don't bring that to you guys, but because we're meeting, we hadn't brought it in, gone here, and also the reimbursement of the payroll from the two enterprise funds back to the general fund, which that was forty-six thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars of that total, so... But you can see the other, we're paying electric bill, garbage bill, doing some vehicle registrations.
I'll make a motion in fair mill.
I have a motion by Kenneth to pay the bills.
Got a second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. Five, four, zero against. At this time, we'll retire into executive session on the sale, discussing real property at ten thirty. I understand, take a little break, we'll come back later. You wanna hit the rest of them first?
Make it after her name, okay? Thank you.
Tested dirty, keep on hero, and he skipped. Nothing follows up with two dirty tests by Skipper. Yeah, I think it's thirteen months. Mine drove for about seven months, so...
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Does it matter if we trade those in or are officers...
I went ahead and put buyback in the motion.
Yeah, the... It's actually firearm, I guess that's kind of a part of the firearm. I'll be liberal in my interpretation, but if they wanna buy it for seventy-five, I'll let them.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Y'all have a good day.
You too.
That was correct, didn't it?
You ready? All right, it is eleven fourteen. We have reconvened into regular session on March twenty-eighth, Wednesday morning. And at this time, we have no action to take on executive session, is that correct? All right, no actions have been taken. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by Don, all in favor. Everybody in favor, all for, none against, at eleven fourteen.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yo.
Thank you all.
Y'all, did anybody see on Facebook last night that somebody had an open comment to the commissioners to pray for them as they travel sixty-seven, since we're not doing our job to get sixty-seven fixed?
Are you serious? Ignore the state highway?
Yeah.
But did you just have, see one on there addressing me because I wasn't in the office for him to talk to?
No, sir, I didn't.
The woman told Evelina, she said, "I'm gonna put this on Facebook. If I wanna talk to him, he better be in the office." I said, "Don't worry about it."
Everybody was jumping on there, woman saying the state highway. I told Sharon, I said, "He can put on there. I'll give him Greg Abbott's phone number if he'd like to call and..." Call the judge.